Okay, I'll call this board of selections meeting to order for Tuesday, January 5. Roll call, we have Phil Crossman, Jake Thompson, myself, Pam Alley, Andy Dorr Town Manager, Elizabeth Funker Deputy Town Clerk, taking minutes, Donald Poole is absent. Approve agenda, will we approve the agendas? Seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor? They'll vote yes. Minutes, approved minutes from the December 22 meeting. Move, we approve the minute, approve minute. I have to be seconded by either?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jake Thompson, all those in favor? Approved sign, treasures warrant number 27, so moved. Seconded by Jake Thompson, all those in favor? Seeing no communication, speakers on the floor. Hearing none. Committee and department reports and appointments, road commissioners report. I said road commissioners report?
Yeah. There's not, no engineer?
I don't have one. You must have, you have last pack.
Oh, that's old packet. I'm sorry. I was gonna say, alright, I wonder why it's so bad. Alright, get rid of that.
Well, it's winter.
Yeah, my other thing.
Any questions on?
No, yeah, I mean.
Jay, treasures report.
I just give a quick over, was providing a quick overview of where we are through the first six months on expenditures. Down about four, about 400,000 from expenditures from where we were last year at this point. Couple of big purchases we had last year. And I think we had already transferred over the capital reserve funds last year as well, so. Nothing that, it's not expected in there at this point.
Everything looks pretty good now.
So far.
We saw something.
Yeah, I got the percentages, the percent spent there on that lap, on the column all the way to the right, so you can kind of see it should be.
Should be somewhere around fifty.
We're halfway through, so yeah, about fifty percent roughly, assuming everything's split equally throughout the year. It's not, but. You see, all of them are hovering a little bit below, or below the fifty percent mark.
We have to pay our county taxes early.
Yeah, those are.
They go on a calendar year.
Yeah, they're on a calendar year, we don't, those are due by, I think, first, first week of November, I believe, the latest. I think the communication tax is September and the bigger tax bill for the county is November.
Any other questions? And old business, Portrait of a Graduate. Hi, Yvonne.
Hi, and I'm also, as a member of the Process Facilitators team, not wearing my Town of Vinylhaven hat, but certainly influenced by work from the Town of Vinylhaven. I am gonna start, and Andy, do you mind if I just do a quick screen share? So, I know Yvonne was on, at our last December meeting, so we'll just do a really quick update, but we're gonna try to be present with a member of the Process Facilitators team at the first board meeting of each month, just to keep you guys informed of where we're at and to maybe use a tiny bit of your time to see where you might land on some questions. So, just a reminder for everybody, we are starting to put some communications based on where we're at in our process now out to the community. So, this just really defines what Portrait of the Graduate is, and is a process, and the process is to define skills and knowledge that we want our students to have to be successful in life, in college, and work, and also especially as future citizens, whether they live on Vinylhaven or they're in our global community. And the first part of the process and sort of where we're at right now is gathering information. So, a bunch of research has been done. We're, we're starting to conduct focus groups and interviews, and we're administering community-wide survey, and Yvonne can probably talk a tiny bit more about that. The second part of Portrait of a Graduate is really taking everything that has been gathered in the first part of the process and generating an action plan that will sort of make actionable items to say, you know, this is what, this is what we've seen, and this is how we might apply what we've seen. So, Yvonne, do you wanna give some updates on where the process is at?
Sure, yes, thank you. And just wanna start by thanking you, Gabe, for the design work. At the, if you go back a slide, that we're psyched about our new logo and our tagline, and it's just been great having Gabe with her town orientation, but her design skills on our, on our committee, it's been really, really helpful. And so, yeah, not that much has happened since the last time I spoke to you. We did just have a meeting today, and we are putting the very finishing touches on a community survey and focus group questions. And so, starting very soon, you'll see it in the wind, you'll see it in social media. And we really, the, the more people that participate, both in the survey and in the focus groups, the better our data will be, the better our action plan will be. So, really inviting you, encouraging you to participate in both the survey and the focus groups, and know, know that a great deal of kind of local school and community input has gone into this, the products that you're looking at. We've been working on this for, for months. And I have been, sort of been able to have my Vinylhaven citizen hat on and my Island Institute education person hat on, but I'm also working with a colleague Val Peacock, who some of you may know from what she did with the Skippers program. But we're really kind of the facilitators, but the, the, the content has been very locally sourced and is very much of and about the community, and I hope that that will come through. This is not a survey that, that you could do in, in another community, it's specifically for Vinylhaven. So, we're, we're gonna get started, we're, we're hoping to get most of them done this month. And so, just really welcome you participating, helping us get the word out, letting us know about any questions or issues. And we will be coming back, as Gabe said, month by month, to sort of help share information as we get it and bring the process directly to you. So, that's, that's my update.
Hey, thanks, Yvonne. So, something that, that has definitely occurred to me from the outset of this, like, with my, with my town hat on, of just like realizing how we talk about, you know, engagement with the community, but also connections to education, connections to economic diversification or economic development. And so, I see Portrait of a Graduate as a wonderful opportunity for our community to really sort of like integrate, you know, what's happening in the school and, you know, what's happening in the community, and looking ahead and saying, you know, how can, whether it's, you know, projects coming from the town or other projects based in our community, how can, you know, we use the information that we have today to really sort of align, align these two things? So, looking from the perspective of the Select Board strategic plan that you worked on in 2000, I believe, now 2019, you know, thinking, there are two things that really jumped out at me, of like, one of the values was education. And I've, I've put up here on the screen how that was defined. And also, the focus area of economic development. So, really investing in planning projects and services that increase economic diversity and community resilience. So, I felt like those two things in particular, directly related to Portrait of a Graduate and saying, well, you know, like, what kinds of skills do people need? What kind of, essentially, like, the, the soft skills and the hard skills when we're looking from the educational perspective. But then, how does that relate to a resilient future on Vinylhaven, and how do we integrate those things? And I don't wanna necessarily put you guys on the spot, but I want, I was thinking of like, what skills and knowledge do you think our students need? Or what would you like to see them have to be successful as future citizens for our, our local and global community? And so, really based on the value of education that you defined in your strategic plan and the focus area of economic development, and maybe, you know, other projects that the town is currently working on, like the Community Development Corporation Committee, the project that they're working on. So, I'm putting it out there, I don't know if this is like a question you can answer in the moment, and if it's not, maybe think about it and we can, we can come back to it. But when you think about this alignment of Portrait of a Graduate with the work you've already identified as being of valuable, being of value to the board and the community, what skills and knowledge would you want our students to have to be successful as future citizens of our local and global community?
I think that that question, if any of us answer that question, what skills and knowledge would you want our students to have? If any of us try to answer that question right now, I think it would be a mistake. I think it's a very good question, but one that requires a thoughtful and considered response, and I certainly would like to think about it and regard it as a challenge of sorts.
Wonderful, Phil, thank you so much.
Is there really an answer to that question? You don't want everyone to know, I mean, you want everyone to have the same basic skills, but you don't want everyone to, I mean, be pigeonholed into this one thing, I'm kinda worried of, I mean, I don't know.
I think the question's pretty broad.
I agree with Phil.
Can I just jump in and say that, that this question, there's a very similar question on the survey that gives you a bunch of potential answers and that's based, again, on sort of local research that we've done and also kind of national trends. And then also, focus groups will be wrestling with different versions of this question. So, you, you, you as a select board, certainly, I hope you wrestle with it, but also like, jump on a Facebook, jump on a focus group or take the survey, and, and it may just help with sort of thinking more and providing some more context, but just even the, the, the wanting to be more thoughtful about it. And I think, I think it was Jake, maybe that idea of like, we know there's this like body of knowledge that we want everybody to have, but then we also wanna, you know, sort of honor everybody's individual passions and creativity and what they're drawn to. So, that already, that's like just great stuff and gets my, the wheels going in my mind. So, so thank you for, for giving it some thought and hopefully interacting with this or a very similar question, you know, in different contexts.
Thanks, Yvonne, and, and thank you all for considering it and knowing that it's out there, and I appreciate that some thought will be put into it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, new business, foreclosed property. So, Andy, you think you've exhausted all our legal obligations here?
I mean, we don't give anyone warranties anyway, so I mean, you've tried to contact people, you, you went back and looked at it for another couple of weeks and thought, I mean, I think, what do we, now it's just, we've already sent the letter, so it basically is foreclosed. Now we just have to decide what we wanna do with it, right?
Yeah, town foreclosed on this piece.
September?
This piece back in September, up just past the Coke bottle. And, or sorry, it's foreclosed back in February. And then I reached, I reached back out with a letter in September, just to do due diligence and follow up and say, did really, me not, not to pay, did you get the notices we sent? Didn't get a response to that. Tried to do a quick online search and thought what I might have found was the owner's record on, we have on file, but if so, they feel that they could be deceased. So, I mean, I didn't get far with that, nothing was filed with the county here since they bought it back in the seventies, I think it was. So. At this point, it is ours, it's a matter of what do you wanna do with it? You know, in the past, if we get a foreclosed piece, usually we're able to work something out with the owner of record. Other times, we put it out for a closed bid or sealed bid process. You do have a letter that was sent to you back in November from the Village Childcare Center, asking you to consider, they're aware of this, they were asking for consideration to be able to purchase it. But I put up there what I thought were three options that you could pursue.
Is this a buildable lot? It's not an daycare, since it was established before, it still is.
Right, yeah, as far as we know, it's a legal lot of records, but someone could probably, wanted to do that, just due diligence to make sure whatever it is that they were interested in having it. It could go there.
I mean, isn't it in the, is it RM1 or RM2?
I believe it'd be RM1.
So, I mean, that's why it's scary. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
Put up the bid, or?
I mean, well, I mean, we have one, you know, yeah, we can put up the bid if that's what you guys think is best, but at the same time, we do have an interested party, it's been interested for some time, and we know that party has a lot of community value.
But instead of selling it to them, I think we should lease it to them for like a dollar a year or something, and then, you know, if something happens, then the land comes back to us if they can't get a house built. I mean, this is for the daycare.
Right.
I mean, then we could save them, I mean, I don't know what they were offering for money, but I mean, if we just leased it to them for.
When you lease that, I just say, give it to them, like, get out.
I would think we might wanna talk to a lawyer about the legal.
You don't have a, I mean, the, the article that's voted at town meeting, I can read it, I didn't put it up here. But the article at town meeting that's voted on every year in the past, again this year, is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board selection on behalf of the town dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon in such terms and conditions as the board deems advisable, except for the property tax acquired from certain senior low-income taxpayers qualified for the state, new state law. So, this wouldn't be, far as we know, that type of property on that end. So, it is, you know, based at the town meeting, up to the board to see how it's fit. We don't have a policy that dictates it be a certain, certain way. Generally, it's been to sealed bid process if we're not able to work it out with the owner of record. So, you might, you might be stepping a little outside of what you have done normally in the past. You know, if you go that route versus just go out for a sealed bid, I mean.
Well, what, my point is about asking about the legal ramifications, if we wanted to let them have it for a dollar a year, whatever, I mean, I don't wanna make sure we do it correctly and legally and not end up.
Well, that's why we wouldn't even have a lease agreement at all, just sell, sell them the property and then the Town of Vinylhaven is no longer the owner.
Well, what would your idea then, Jake, about leasing it for a dollar a year?
Well, I was just saying, so they can buy it from us, it would be cheaper, plus, I mean, sometime in the future, what's gonna happen if they disband that daycare and they're gonna sell it? And what are they gonna do with it? I mean, the land come back to us as well as they can.
Right.
If we leased it, so. I mean, we've only had a daycare for ten or so years, fifteen years. I mean, that's all I'm saying. But, I mean, whatever, we could always say that if they go under, they give the land back to us or something, or if they just ban, would that be part of the?
Well, or for the matter, if they disband and they put it up for sale, yeah, sure, they, the organization's made some money, but it's a nonprofit, and, and there'll be, there'll be someone else paying the town property taxes. Phil?
I'm in general agreement with the sentiment that we accommodate the IVC somehow, because I think they've been, they've only been here for ten and fifteen years, but I think they've made an invaluable contribution. And it's, it's, it's not at all sure, I'm not at all sure that there will be a success that far from town with a mobile home, which is what they proposed. But I'd certainly much rather give them a chance than have them fonder and not be able to find a place for themselves next year. And I'd be agreeable to lease, leasing it to them for a nominal fee so that we can, so that we can see how they make out there, so they can see how they can make out there, so that we can see if there are any further legal ramifications to prior ownership. I think it would be an ideal opportunity to hold everything in abeyance for a little while, while still giving IVC the chance to operate.
Well, I mean, if we signed the lease with them, we're already technically the owners of record now, right? So, they could technically start tomorrow without having to go through any more paperwork, right? I mean.
Well, we'd have to go through a new draw, but, yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't be like going through the, if we sold it to them, they'd have to, I mean, I don't know.
That's assuming, that's a, that's a, I mean, that would be a term that they'd be agreeable to or something.
Whatever, I would just say that it's just like easier to lease it to them than, than to give it to them, but, I mean, maybe they want it so they can have the $25,000 for collateral or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I would, and I would actually say, I think it'd be easier on the town's part to give it to them than we said. But I also understand the point you are making, and perhaps, you know, if we do sell it, you know, and I was thinking selling it for the back taxes, which amount to sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars.
Yeah, generally, you, that's usually your minimum bid, your minimum reserve bid.
You have to get back to back practice, isn't that what it's saying?
Yeah.
You don't have to, but, I mean, it's just good practice.
I mean, we should hope to receive.
Yeah, right, I mean, yeah, you know, we would have required my law to do that, but yes, we, yes. Especially when the back taxes amount to that. You know, so, but at any rate, if, if for some reason they can't build there, then, you know, they, you know, it becomes ours again, we hand them back their sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars, and we find another use for the property, put it up, to put it, actually put it up to bid.
So, what is, what exactly is your proposal, Eric?
My proposal is to sell it to them for whatever their back taxes currently amount to, That was as I remember. Okay, so a little interest has built up on that.
Sixteen hundred dollars.
Sixteen hundred, yeah.
Whatever, that would be more than they, our own, right? And presumably the taxes.
So, really technically, shouldn't some, one, someone, one of us, shouldn't they commotion here, by the way?
Throw right at much proposal.
I move that we sell lot.
So, what kind of, I mean, so the next time we acquire a lot and some other nonprofit comes and asks us for it, are we gonna be expected to give it to them for, I mean, that's that kind of another thing that I'm worried about.
They didn't, just because they expect it doesn't mean.
That's why, I mean, I would recommend that you do what you normally do, and the policy's saying that's what you do, we have to do. It's just sort of still good, that's just because that's how you've done it, that's make the.
Andy, I missed, what was your recommendation, Andy?
They could treat it like you have any other one, when you can't come up with the terms with the previous owner, is that you, you put a sealed bid out. You know, that's, that's, there's no policy, that's, that's what you will do, but that's what we have done, and that would keep it consistent and, and potentially avert, you know, what Jake was asking about is, you know, should another property in the future come up? You know, is that kind of a?
Perhaps that.
Well, you did that for that one, shouldn't you do this for, you know?
Perhaps that board would disagree with that nonprofit mission, or, I mean, that's up to the board, and, you know, that's up to a future board. Discussion. Phil?
I'm not opposed to what you propose, Eric, but I think that leasing it to them is a better idea. If we lease it to them for a dollar a year or something like that, in recognition of the contributions that makes in the community, and it doesn't work out, then we have the opportunity to sell it for what would certainly be more than back taxes regardless.
Well, that's, that's an excellent point. Is that a motion, Phil?
With me?
Is that a motion that you wanna make, that we lease it to them?
Yes, I move that we lease it to them for a dollar a year.
Second.
Okay, it's the seconded by Pam Alley. The motion is that we lease the piece of property to Island Village Childcare, correct, for the code, for one dollar a year. Any more discussion?
From there on the call.
I think, yeah, Carter's right there. Does anybody have, Carter, do you have any thoughts on that? She's muted, but she can.
I'm, my, hi, guys, I really appreciate you taking this into consideration, first of all. My only question is, like, would we be able to get a mortgage if it's leased? I'm just not sure how that works, does anybody know?
A more, yeah, a more, you know, yeah, they'll want some sort of collateral, a bank will want some sort of collateral presumably. Presumably, yeah, you know, to build a building. You know, after borrowing money.
Oh, I would assume you might have a down payment, Carter?
Oh, yeah, we absolutely have a down payment.
I mean, that should.
You know, it might just slide the, the amount the bank needs on a down payment potentially, whatever it is you, you seek to go do next, that's my guess. I mean, because otherwise, generally, right, you have your land and that can be used, as Jake said, as your part of your collateral, your down payment, and when you don't, and you're building brand new, you're supposed to put up a little extra. I don't know if that, if that's, I don't know if that's what happened here or not.
Yeah, I don't know how far, but, I mean, people do it all the time.
If that failed with the lease, and they didn't approve a loan because you didn't own the land, we could readdress the problem at that time?
Well, I mean, you could always give them a long-term lease and that's more like ownership of the land too, right?
No, according to some people, apparently, yes. According to a certain people, some people, yes.
That'd be up for a mortgage company to decide if they feel that, that's enough.
And so, the other, and the other problem with the lease is, you know, we're really throwing out a lot of options here and a lot of possibilities, but let's say we are leasing them for a dollar, they get a loan to build a building, they have this building for three or four years, and then something happens, and they are going to go under. Now, they still don't own that building, we will now acquire a piece of property with that building, which isn't necessarily the end of the world or anything, but, you know, they really lost out, result. Phil?
Yeah, I think you made a good point, and I think Pam made a good point too. I suggest that we go ahead and move on this motion and see how they make out. And if they don't make it out well, because they don't have the requisite equity in the property to secure a mortgage, then we can address it again and perhaps give them a lease with an option to buy, which would represent that equity. And, but it would, a bridge, it's a bridge we don't need to cross until we find out we need to.
Right, I agree with you, Phil. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And Phil voted yes as well, so. Congratulations. Good luck.
I hope it works out, Carter, for you guys.
Thank you all so much, sorry, I'm muting, I've got kids running around everywhere here.
Yeah, that's okay, we understand.
But no, that, that sounds like a great plan, you know, we can talk more logistics later, and we also have a board meeting next week, so I'm excited to be able to bring them some news, because we haven't really had any for a long, long time.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, town parking lot. It's amazing nowadays, a sucker thing would have to be up.
I know.
I think Eric, you suggested, assume that this might be on the agenda, so I put it on.
Yeah, I did, because there has been discussions amongst the board about solutions and what we, if we should do something with the parking lot overnight, so. And I'm not necessarily in favor of those options, but probably someone else would.
Still not my idea, ideal situations either, I was saying that. Now it's close, although it's something we could try to pull in there at night from. I don't even know how, but, but the one side's missing both posts, it's not like you can just put a chain across it. On right post, it'd be the inside, but in, the entrance part, there's not, neither one of the two very big.
A post could be put in there, no problem.
You can put a metal post in pretty easy, yeah.
Well, it's not. Did you find out anything about Phil?
Phil?
What?
Do you have your hand raised?
Yeah, you know, as I find closing off the town parking lot a really good impulsive. Yeah, um, you know, as, I find closing off the town parking lot a really good impulsive solution, but it's not a practical one. Uh, there are, there are people, I don't know who at this point, but there are people certainly who have a right to access that parking lot, who aren't in there squealing tires and raising hell. And I'm sick of being pissed off one night after another because people are so troubled by the abominable behavior of a handful of people. Uh, however, the, the cop who is only on duty for four days a week is presently staying right there essentially next to the parking lot, which is a big plus at least four nights a week. And the fact of the matter is, I can't help but think that if the people who are causing this kind of disturbance were spoken to by the Board of Selectmen as a group or individually, that it wouldn't have some impact. I just can't help but believe it wouldn't. It's not practical for me to suggest that every time somebody's down there squealing tires, the entire Board of Selectmen show up at, to, uh, make their feelings known, but I, I think a case can be made for actually persuading these people to take other people into consideration when they behave that way.
But you know what it is? I mean, several months ago, when Lauren Wasenthal shared that video, yeah, I mean, could I testify in court to that, to the effect that I know exactly whose vehicle it was? No, but do I know whose vehicle it was? Absolutely. I mean.
But that doesn't mean.
But yeah, exactly.
Driving.
Well.
You know, that's enough.
I, I vote great, then I will go ask that person, hey, who has your vehicle last night?
I mean, I don't.
I just don't think it's.
But it's not, but again, that does exactly zero legal.
No, but do you think it will actually help if you go and talk to these people, because I won't remind that.
It might.
Just my, that you would just be filled by two or more.
Yeah, they might do it right in front of your house next. You know, they're really, yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think the people that we're talking about here, the time is long past for us, for them talking to, and probably somebody should have taken over to the woodshed when they were kids, a little more often or something, I don't know, but like.
I, I mean, I don't know what the good solution is.
I, I, yeah, and I'm, because it's such a stupid problem, it's so stupid that this is a problem. It's unfortunate that we don't have a real solution, but.
Sounds true.
Yeah, with a remote control in my house.
And Betsy can push the button.
And Betsy can push the button.
Well, I, I don't know that it's up to the Board of Selectmen to to do that. I, I mean, we have a responsibility to our town to help, try to help remedy problems, but I don't know that approaching problem makers is actually up to us. I, I just don't know that it is.
Phil?
Yeah, Pam, you're absolutely right. It's not up to us, and I'm not suggesting it's up to us. I was trying to make a point. Uh, and that point is, I don't think that most of these people are beyond reason. I'm not suggesting that it's reasonable or practical to think that the Selectmen should respond every time somebody's down there squealing tires. But I, the point is, uh, I just don't believe that beyond reason, and if, uh, we spoke to those people when the opportunity presented itself, as, as opposed to responding every time the siren goes off or something, I can't help but believe we wouldn't have an impact. I may be wrong, but that's my feeling. I certainly don't, I certainly agree with you that we don't have an obligation.
Well, how, so how do you plan to find out who these people are?
Well, for instance, uh, well, I can find out readily enough who they are. I'll just get down there and station myself in the motel parking lot and tell you who they are. But let's take that example that Eric just cited, uh, he, we looked at Lauren's film, we know whose car it was, we know he was driving. So let's say we talk to that person. We don't go talk to him and say, okay, who was driving that night? We go and talk to him as representatives of the community and make a case for him behaving more responsibly. Wow, either these people care about how I behave, Jesus.
Well, remember, if you have, if you have a quorum, it becomes a meeting.
Yeah.
Which I really, really like it, if we avoid.
No, no, I'm not suggesting we, uh, we meet as a group and go accost a person. I'm just suggesting we take the opportunity as individuals to do it.
Well?
I've had a meeting with, uh, the deputy, uh, informal meeting with the deputy, just because we cross paths now and then. And I've made him aware of what's going on. I've given him copies of emails from people who have emailed me about uh, how beleagued they are by that behavior, and so he's certainly aware of it, and I would like to think that he would uh, be an effective force by himself. I hope that's the case, but he hasn't been long enough for me to find out.
What happens if someone does get caught by the cops? They get a couple hundred dollar fine?
Essentially. Yeah, unnecessary.
They're squalling off to a three hundred dollar piece of tires, and they don't seem to care about that. I don't see where the fines gonna really think that much.
You know, you have fines for a couple hundred dollars for, yeah, unnecessary noise or mess with driving.
If they actually walk their life for thirty days, like maybe with driving or something, then if someone actually did that, then they might stop up, you know that. I just don't have any faith.
The money doesn't mean anything to them.
No, not, I mean, some of those tires, they're burning off, probably three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Or more, and they just, they don't care, so. I don't know if they can be reasoned with either. I'm not as optimistic as Phil, I guess.
But Phil, if you individually want to go talk with somebody, if you feel like you know who they are, then, you know, that's certainly well within your rights as a citizen.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying it would be, it would have a lot more effect if, uh, the kid said, Jesus, Phil came and talked to me yesterday, and God almighty, the next day Eric came and talked to me. Before you know it, Pam came and talked to me, so, uh, there must be something to this. I must be, uh, you know, you get my drift.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well.
Well, I mean, Phil, if you find out who it is, and you, I, I left you to, um, lead the pack on this, and.
Okay.
I don't even know if I was really, I, I have an idea of probably some of the people it could be, but I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I assure you, the list would not surprise you.
Sure won't, but I just don't know exactly who it is.
Okay, I think we've unfortunately reached the end of our meaningful discussion about this. So let's go on to Pope Humane Society Agreement. I don't have, I don't, is it just an annual agreement?
They came in, I think, on, after the package we've done, and it's a, they're, we do it annually, they're offering another annual uh, that agreement with them, so that, you know, animals have to go over there, that's a little untaken. Um, we can set up, I don't think we've ever done it, you can set up fee, I don't think that, that many that end up going over there, it's kind of like unplanned and have to be returned. Usually we're pretty good about being able to find out who's it is, or people help find out whose it is. Um, you know, the only thing that came to mind is if you wanted to do that would be just to cover the boat ticket cost potentially, but again, it doesn't happen that often, so I don't even think that that really matters. So it was either a one-year or I believe a three-year agreement to sign on with them. Um, but otherwise there was no change in the terms that we've had.
And what's that cost?
It's fixed, uh, it's a percentage based on the population, um, it was like, yeah, I guess, um.
Is it cheaper if you do it for three years or?
It went down a little bit, um.
Yeah.
You want us, yeah.
We have enough money in the budget, right? It's not.
No, it's already something we budget for.
Yeah, but it's not, but if we budget for three years, it's not gonna mess it up.
It, it's cheaper if you go for three.
Well, that's probably, yeah.
I can't remember the exact difference.
Approximately.
What's that?
Approximately how much?
The two hundred dollars difference.
But I mean, for the, what do you think it might cost for the three years? Just.
Annually, I think we budget like fourteen hundred bucks or fifteen hundred bucks, I think it is, something like that. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it in.
And how much is it if we went with a buying animal rate?
There's no buy animal rate, it was just an opportunity that you, if there are costs, the town looks to recoup, you could potentially assess, uh, like a, an impound fee, if you will, um, and that, that money would be collected by them and sent back to us. I mean, sometimes do it, sometimes don't do it. We, I don't believe we ever have.
I don't, I don't recall seeing or reading about this before.
We, it comes up, yeah.
I know, I just don't recall the details.
I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty.
I make a motion that we sign a three-year contract.
I mean, if it's something you really think we need.
I'll second the motion.
It's something we, we've certainly had, and without it, if we do need to take an animal somewhere that we can't find the owner of for, um, I mean, I think a lot of it, a lot of, mostly how it gets utilized by Vinyl Haven is for stray animals, for, for parrot cats.
Oh, okay.
We've had people, you know, Stephanie and has done a lot to try and corral some cats and take them over, and they're willing to do a lot of that that work over there, um.
That's what I was wondering.
Part of it's kind of, you know, looped in all of that as well, is part of the agreement. Again, something that we do annually, we budget for annually, it saves us a little bit of money if we go on to a three-year versus a one-year.
So I second Jake's motion. Any discussion?
Three-year contract instead of one.
Yeah.
To do it every year, anyway, you might.
Any discussion? All in the favor? All right, report from Town Manager.
Phil raised his hand, do you even say that?
Okay, Phil, Phil voted yes. Uh, the last two weeks, we had two holidays in there, so, you know, a little bit, uh, on the lighter side of things. Uh, we are, you know, continuing to work on getting the goals, um, trying to corral those from the department heads and go over those, go over them with them, um, and then finalize and getting the six-month capture and putting the worksheets together for them to work on the more detailed breakdowns, um. Still anticipating the first week of February to be able to have that ready, um. The capital projects, the bridge, or, you know, the bridges, some of them are gonna start mobilizing this month, um, to be able to start bringing material out. Um, I will get a, a more, um, firm schedule, tentative schedule from them, uh, so we can share that with the communities, so they haven't seen that from them, but they said that they would share that with us, so we could provide it. Um, the garage, um, work, the site is being prepped for the salt sand shed, um, and I'm understanding that they're gonna start bringing out some of the materials for that building, um, this month as well, um, they'll be able to take it right to the site. Um, the January first, we started with the new ambulance filling service, so, um, as far as I know, everything is, um, good for them to go, um, at the January first, and so we'll see how that works out over the next few weeks, make sure we've got that smoothed out, and hopefully there's some improvements to to that going forward for those that end up utilizing that service. Um, and, um, a few of us, um, were interviewed today, um, someone, the Maine Municipal Association, they, they, they write a federal issues paper, um, for the state, and so that COVID was one of the, the topic for this year, that they wanted to learn what communities were doing, um, how they responded to it, and so, um, I don't know how it came about, but it was asked if we wanted to contribute and share our story of how we, how our community responded and have been through this, and so, um, three of us joined them today to join the writer today to do an interview, so that's something that will, will eventually be presented in their, um, federal issues paper.
Is that something that comes out as an email, like if you send out all those?
Yeah, I think, um, if you're on, yeah, you guys on, being on their email list, would you come in the, I think they usually put it as an insert to the Maine Townsmen magazine you get monthly.
Hey, report a member.
Uh, one thing that same trucks are, is the truck parked like when between the East Boston Road and Rock Cemetery Road? With no plates on it, by that, it's been there for at least twenty-four hours.
Did a black pickup truck, black Sierra?
Yeah, it's an older, it's.
Older, yeah, no plate, no plate.
No plates on it and it's parked like right there, so, I mean, there's quite a few people that do turn that way that, you know, coming from East Boston, going down Rock Cemetery and it's history and the way I don't exactly know, it's not the first.
Do consider it an abandoned vehicle?
Oh, well, there's no plates on it.
Yeah.
And it was also blocking off the Port Farm Road the other day.
Oh, so they're still using?
Well, the vehi, the vehicle, if it's the same truck, it would've it was the same pickup truck.
I don't know which it is, but it doesn't have.
I also saw it on the side of the sand road a few days earlier.
Yeah, I thought I saw it on the sand road.
You know, near, uh, Ticket House.
Yeah, so, the same, it, it looks like the same truck.
It's got to be, same truck.
I don't know what to do, I mean, I forgot, I was gonna call the cop, but then I just didn't know. But it's still there when I just came up here tonight, I thought maybe it would be moved, but it's been there overnight. And I mean, if they're plowing, they might need plow, sand, you know, be, if they're trying to do that whole thing, then I mean, they probably have to make a, I don't even know if they can make that corner without that little road, so. That's pretty much all I got. And did you ever find out about the tree on the school road or our cool lane? Did you ever talk to Renee or?
I haven't asked her if she'd be available for this.
No.
Doing something with it. Sorry, I haven't been at the very top of the list.
Um, so, just give me your hand out. Phil, go ahead.
Um, the Marine Railway down there next to the town parking lot, the other day, uh, a truck drove off it because so much of it has collapsed. What are the prospects of getting that rebuilt?
Good, once you, once we budget the money and assume we get either the, have the cash for it or grant funds to repair it, I mean, that's been a large reason why we had created the Harbor Reserve a few years ago, is to help maintain that infrastructure down there.
What do you mean by they drove off or they backed down too far over the end, or they drove off the side of it, or?
No, actually, the, the wheel went down be, between the, uh, there's supposed to be a parallel concrete barrier that runs down, but the concrete has separated so far from the actual lateral railway pieces that the truck just slipped off, there wasn't any, there wasn't any danger, but it needed help getting out. Uh, what, wasn't this subject to a grant? Refresh my memory, wasn't there a waterfront grant that this is subject to?
Gift grants, Small Harbor Improvement Program grants.
Yeah.
Fires a fifty percent match, if I remember correctly, from the community, and that's assuming you're approved.
I'm assuming that you even have an Army Corps of Engineers permit and all this other stuff to do, something that's underwater, you know? Well, underwater, I'd go, it's very possible.
Yeah, I mean, but that's why we've been building up this harbor reserve now for several years and.
They're both, both of the two grants, but I guess if you count the one on the third, they're all three of them are.
And the one on the third, that is going to be in the issue because obviously it's not ours, but.
Well, can we go ahead and, uh, begin, uh, begin the process now of, of, uh, getting that repaired?
I think the question is whether you repair it or replace it, because it is so far beyond a certain condition. I mean, at some point, these things need to be replaced altogether, you know, whether uh, it's worth confirming which, which one exactly you're talking about, I guess for my sake, um.
Town parking lot.
You mean which component or, or which railway?
Let's say which railway, because we have two town parking lots, and I know we generally refer to one as the town parking lot, and the other one is the fish plant, but.
I'm talking about the one next to the motel.
Gotcha. Yeah, so it's a matter of deciding whether you wanna, at some day, if today's the day to replace the dang thing, uh, or if you wanna try and, try and repair what could, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's certainly possible, but, I mean, at some point you have to decide whether you wanna repair it completely, um, or just put Band-Aids over them.
How about if we ask Kevin to take a look at it? Do you think this is something that needs to be engineered before we can put an RFP out, for example?
If you're going with it, it's possible. I mean, I wouldn't even dare try to say, I mean, I don't know enough about what it takes to build that, I mean, the I think the design we have now, I believe are, um, prefabbed, precasted, interlocking pieces on both of those. The one on the third, it was very different from that.
Would it be all right with everyone if I talked to Kevin about it?
Fine, maybe.
Fine, maybe.
Cause our tibet's still out here working out the door.
No, I think they're done.
Okay, uh, I have another issue. What do we decide to do about Faye's uh, difficulty with the Blackington property that she wrote us all about a few weeks ago? uh, difficulty with the Blackington property that she wrote us all about a few weeks ago?
Any, any topic like that, you know, may or may not, that may or may not exist, we'll be discussing it in executive session. So, probably.
Why don't we, uh, can we schedule an executive session for the next meeting, so that we can put this to rest?
Yep, yes.
And finally, uh, you know, the last, at the last Selectment meeting, we talked about a vehicle that is parked having its engine running for as much as fourteen hours a day, and it's on essentially town property. Is it in violation of any ordinance, local estate that you know of, Andy?
I did learn today that the state has an idle law, I don't know the particulars of it, but the supervisor that was out today uh, did stop in and share that, the local ordinance, uh, I'm not aware of any local ordinance violation of an idling vehicle, um, you know, unless that vehicle happens to be idling between the hours of eleven PM and five AM at the town parking lot, uh, where our ordinance says you can't be occupied, have an occupied vehicle, um.
And what did you find out about that idle law?
I haven't, I have to, I just heard that there is one today.
Would you, uh, look into it?
Anybody that fits on private property presumably makes it idle as much as they want.
I have to.
It's not, it's not on private property.
No, I'm just saying they, oh, we're just curious what for.
Uh, there was someone who had a, a question in the chat agency, um, right away, I don't know if you want to entertain that.
No, we, we had speakers on the floor.
This is Ellen. Um, Eric, somehow I missed the speakers from the floor, I must have had trouble signing in with, because of the internet. Would it be possible to address the Selectmen before you close the meeting?
Uh, yes, briefly, please.
Uh, uh, I think Holly is on the call too, uh, she's chairman of the Planning Commission. We really need help from the Housing Committee, which is now defunct, in order to do some of the work that the Planning Commission is charged with. So, um, we would like to have you reconvene the Housing Committee, and I've actually reached out to some people who have particular skills, who could really help the Housing Committee address really the important issues of affordable year-round housing and rental housing, um, elder housing, and possible repairs with grants, and workforce housing that I know Andy's brought up at Selectmen's meetings. So, if the Selectmen are willing, we'd really like to see this committee up and functioning and making some headway. I have notes going back previously to two thousand and eighteen, when I was on the Housing Committee, and we never got anywhere. So I think we need to start over, start afresh, get some people on board who realize this is a, gonna be a working committee with a ta, with tasks and assignments and results, and, um, get things done, and to that end, I'd really like to see us have the assistance of Gabe or maybe Matt, because when we did the Downtown Master Plan, these are very complicated issues, there are lots of components, there's a lot of research outreach, a lot of organizational skills that are needed, and I don't think one person as the chair can be responsible for that, we really need town support and help with this, if this is gonna work.
Well, we never unconvene.
I would certainly endorse that effort.
Thank you, Phil, everybody's, um, uh, whatever it is, they expired in June of two thousand and twenty, so the committee's basically defunct.
Ellen says we do have two that expired this year.
Well, who are they?
Uh, Jeff Aronson and Pam Kittredge.
Well, I think Pam would like to continue to be on the committee, and I understand she has very good writing skills, so she would probably be an asset.
Can you just bring it to the people that?
Yeah, bring this, bring this list to the people that want to be on the committee.
We will appoint them at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Isn't that what we generally do those committees?
I'm sorry, two people were speaking at once that I wasn't able to hear clearly.
Just bring this a list on, of, uh, people that do want to be on the committee, and we'll get them on.
Wonderful, well, do you think we could be, if I'm gonna speak with people, I want to know if we're gonna have town support, I mean, in Abe or Gabe, because without that, I don't really think we can function, and I don't want to promise them something that's not gonna come through.
I don't know how much time gave, I mean, we've, I've been on Gabe's plate right now, I don't know how much more room there is right now.
Could you ask her?
It's an Andy and Gabe question.
Yeah, I'll follow up with them, I haven't had a chance since we came up before the weekend to be able to, um, figure out, not having a clear vision of what the committee work would fully entail and not, you know, so it's require a little bit of information, I think, or give and take, but I'll at least check in with staff to see if that's possible.
Okay, and if maybe Gabe doesn't have time completely, I understand Matt's working with her, maybe he could help facilitate the committee and, and, you know, consult with Gabe on occasions, since she's so knowledgeable about the community.
I'll check with the staff.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it, Holly, are you there? Maybe we lost Holly.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if there is nothing else, I move adjourned. Second by Pam Ellen, all in the favor? Thank you all, have a good night.
Night.